All right, we're gonna get started here. Just as a reminder, each candidate will have one minute to answer every question, including their opening and closing statements. Please stick to that one minute. This is not a debate, but just a question and answer session. Attacks and responding to other candidates' responses will not be tolerated. If a candidate attacks another candidate, that part of the video will be deleted, and the candidate will lose their closing statement. Let's begin with the opening statements. Start again.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
I'm off.
You're on your way.
Oh, is it off? I can't hear you.
Sorry.
No worries.
Whoa! Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? There we go, okay, sorry. So first, I just want to say thank you to the AP Government Class and students and staff that put this event together today. My name is Jane Barshelber. I'm running for reelection to the Board of Education. I've lived in town since 1999. I have been married to my husband Tim for ten years. We have three kids, Aiden, Aiden, Charlie. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Miracle League of Southeastern Connecticut. I sit on Eastline Youth Coalition, and I serve on my PTA. And I'm the Cape State Relations Chair. And I'm a mother and a mom here, and it keeps me very busy. Local politics is a way for all of us to become a part of this wonderful town. We are all here because we love Eastline, and we want to do what's best for the town and all of its citizens. We all have a political party that has endorsed us, but once elected, we represent everyone in town.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Eric Baumann, and appreciate you putting on this session. When I reflect on myself, so you get to know a little bit more about me, I have four priorities in my life. The first is family. I have three kids, a wife and three kids. All three have gone through the school system and recently graduated college. The other three areas of focus where I cut my time, one is healthcare. I've worked advisor in finance for the last 26 years. The environment, I've been treasurer on the Nature Conservancy, which is the largest nonprofit global environmental firm for the past five years, and their focus is protecting our land and waterways. And the last is, last and certainly not least, is education, where I've been on the Board of Ed for the past eight years, and I think education is the great equalizer for everyone and provides opportunities to all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jill Marie, and I want to thank everyone who put in on this opportunity for us all to meet or for you all to meet us. Your first question is, what does local politics mean to you? To me, it means an opportunity to serve my community and put back, put back into the community what it has given to me. I've always been interested in politics. I've been active politically for the past 30 years in this town, and I've been on the Board of Ed for 12 years. So to me, I see politics as an opportunity to serve the town. It's often difficult for my people to run for office. A lot of people are too busy, have children or whatever, but this is an opportunity to serve our town. And another thing I'd like to speak to is, I've lived in the town for three years. My daughter went through the school system. She's a very successful adult, and I have the Eastline School System and Ms. Hardy to thank for that. Again, my name is Jill.
Hello, good morning. Thank you to YP Saba for organizing this event, and it's great to see young students as yourself being involved with the local municipal elections and wanting to learn about the candidates. I am Vivek Prohit. I'm a resident of Eastline for about 15 years. I have a doctorate in pharmaceutical sciences, and I'm employed with a pharma industry. I'm running for the Board of Ed. I'm a parent of a recently graduated YP, who is now a freshman at a top-10 school in the country. He benefited from the school system, and I feel responsible for serving the schools and the community. That's what local politics means to me. If elected, my focus will be on academics, arts, and technical education. My priorities will be creating opportunities for the students, supporting teachers, and work with all the stakeholders to produce responsible budgets. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Esteban Garcia. I have lived in Eastline for the last 10 years. I have a fourth grader in a kindergarten in the school, so I'm deeply invested in the success of our schools in the long term. I see getting involved in local politics from my lens as an immigrant person, American, I see as a way to serve my community that I love and I live here, and it's a way to give back, provide my lens as, as an immigrant, as a person of color, also as a person that works in higher education, you know, have that experience, and also as somebody that comes from the financial background too, it's really helpful for the Board of Ed to have that lens from different perspectives. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for the YP Saba for hosting this event today.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here. I wanna go and give thanks. This is incredible that you all are invested in this. I'm very grateful for that. My name is Steve Huber. I'm newly on this panel. I've lived in Eastline for four years. I live here with my partner and my two children, who are beautifully behaving in the back. And I've really enjoyed the couple of years I've been here in Eastline. And as an outsider, I can say there's something really magical about Connecticut politics in that you get to help run a government with your friends and neighbors, and there's something really unique about that. So I'm eager to participate in that. And as an educator myself, as a teacher at Connecticut College, I'm deeply invested how I've been teaching my children. So thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Our next question is going to be asked by Cecile. We're gonna start with Mr. Huber.
Hi, there has been a noticeable uptake in high schoolers and teenagers vaping in schools. How would you, a member of the Board of Education, try to reduce the use of vapes in Eastline schools?
Wonderful. Yeah, I mean, I was astounded by the statistics that I found when you all asked this question. According to Brookings Institute, it's almost a third of high school students vape in this country, and that's astounding. So there are certain ways that I think we can focus on that. Most of the, most students get vaping from their friends and peers, not from stores. So programming around understanding what it means in a high school community to be responsible to another, I think would be a traditional route to go. And I also would advocate, it would be interesting to look into programs that are a little bit more experimental, that follow, at least in secondary education, with treatment lengths, like training counselors in addiction services and nicotine abatement and things of that nature to address the problems here and not just avoid it, but actually help students who need the help in an honest and transparent way.
Thank you so much for that question, Cecile. So it is definitely, whatever way I see it, I've got two-pronged approach. So from the Board of Ed, we, one of the primary roles is to establish policies for the school system. So we actually did, last year, did review of policy on smoking and vaping. So there are already policies in place, but beyond that, I think it's up to us to encourage education, especially peer education, that's doing most of its backhaul. If you come from an adult, you know, from a, you know, an adult or somebody that's, you know, giving you information in an academic way or whatnot, we see that students really don't react to that, but they, they really relate to their peers, educating other peers, and that's what I would encourage the ministry to focus on, to measurement their, the negative impact of nicotine and vaping and all that, to make sure that those levels are decreasing in Eastline High School.
Yeah, vaping is a problem, as I truly recognize this, and nicotine is a drug. Working, you know, being a clinical pharmacologist, but great, it is a drug. There should not be any argument about it. However, as the, as the regulations of the country and the state catch up to it, it is unfortunate that some of our student community members succumb to the false advertising and flashy advertising by the vape manufacturers, as well as succumb to peer pressure. We as a community have to plan together and provide support and education about the harmful effects of vaping. The Board of Ed should support education and support programs for students who are struggling with the habit, and I agree, providing support and maybe treatment options through the school system may be, may be the best way to handle this crisis.
I don't know how much more I can say or really add to in what the past three candidates have said. I will share this, that we're in the process of getting a school-based health clinic in our school, which I think will be a place that we can provide services for students that are involved with vaping. I'd also like to recommend, for any of the people in the room, while I was doing my research, there was a documentary series on Netflix called "The Big Vape," and it was amazing what it showed. It showed the history, where it came from, the creators. It was something eye-opening that I had never expected, and it is certainly a problem when you have middle schoolers vaping. The other thing I'd like to say that also came up was, we're now, we're now probably in the middle of a problem with marijuana because of the legal status in the state of Connecticut. So that's something else that's also pinging up on your eyes. And thank you. Sorry.
Hi, thanks, Cecile. Great question, and I'm actually gonna broaden it, and I think Jill was broadening it a bit. Is I gonna broaden it that there are four major risks for teenagers: alcohol, drugs, smoking tobacco, and vaping. And when I look at that, when you look at what we've done on education for drinking and driving, what we've done on smoking tobacco, I think it's been pretty effective. More to go, but we've been pretty effective at that. But drugs, we need a lot more, bigger, a lot more work to do, and specifically, I'm concerned about the smoking marijuana and driving or doing other drugs and driving. I think we've done well on the drinking, not as well on the education of that. And then they've been, need to do a lot more education, both for parents and, and students. Parents don't understand the vaping and what's going on. I know I didn't, and that's something that I think we need to focus on. Thank you.
Got it. Got it. (laughter)
All right, so Eastline Schools is working in tandem with Youth Coalition to find ways to address the vaping problem in our schools. We've been targeting, targeting both the middle and high schools by bringing in the peer-to-peer anti-vaping prevention program, the student interns from Southern Connecticut State University. We have had discussions about bringing in vape detectors and have given the students limited bathroom access. When students are caught vaping, they see the drug and alcohol counselors at school to work on tobacco cessation. The town of Eastline is set to receive dual and per due monies, and we have received some, and it is earmarked to work on vaping and addiction issues townwide. The vaping issues are part of a much larger issue, which is student social, emotional, mental health. We are very lucky that we've been able to hire a number of social workers the last few years and should soon be opening a student-based health center that will hopefully help us even more with the addiction issues.
Thank you. The next question will be asked by Quinn and Ms. Barshelber. Here we start.
Thank you, Alex. Last year, Eastline's schools were hit by a budget crisis that hindered the learning of all students throughout all schools. How do you plan to avoid a budget crisis like that happening again in the future?
So with regards to the budget crisis, we are always looking for ways to collaborate with not only the town, but the surrounding towns. The school budget's tough because the majority of our budget comes from town taxpayers. We have come to expect that Eastline is a high-achieving district. In order to keep our high-achieving district, we need to make sure we're paying our critical staff. Eastline used to have some of the lowest-paid staff, and over the years, we've been trying to fix that. As board members, it is our responsibility to be fiscally responsible, while also ensuring that our staff is compensated accordingly, and also delivering high-quality education that we are all accustomed to. The children we are educating today are the generations of students that will be taking care of us. As the Chair of the Cape State Relations Committee, I spent a lot of time in Hartford this past year asking our legislators to keep our funding intact. Something we can all do, as I've done, is to write letters to the Education Committee and ask them to retool education funding, because the current way of funding our education budget just doesn't work.
So the budget process last year was pretty frustrating for everyone involved, and we definitely need to do something to improve it and ensure that that doesn't happen again. Got it, Cecile? Yeah, perfect. One thing we've already done is, over the summer, we already had our first budget workshop looking forward to the 24, 25 school year. We're also looking to get an earlier read on what the costs are going to be. Last year, if you remember, we had a bit of a perfect storm. High healthcare costs, big increase in healthcare, big increase in utility costs, and then COVID dollars were going away. So we started at like a 10% increase. We had to work, we had to work hard for that. So we are starting earlier. We're also looking to get, looking more at grants. We actually did secure almost a million dollars in grants so far for this coming year. And then we wanna, I'm running out of time, do what Jamie said as well, is the Collaboration Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Staff, and everyone else. So thank you.
Thank you for asking this challenging question. Would you say the budget crisis, to me personally being on the Board of Ed, being on the Board for the past 12 years, every year, it's not a budget crisis, but it's extremely stressful for all of us that are on the Board of Ed. And we go through difficulties every year, trying to pull pennies here, dollars here from different, from different accounts. So I'm not sure what we can exactly do. My two colleagues, current colleagues, have made great suggestions, and I support every one of those. But I think when it comes to doing a town budget in these times, and we are approximately two-thirds of the town budget, it's gonna be a struggle no matter what we do. Has anyone done their recent family budget? Is that not a struggle because of the increase of high-cost items? So I'd like to say we're going to continue to be active, interacting with the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, bring them early into the process.
Many important questions, and I could start by saying that budgets are never easy. I acknowledge that last year's budget was probably extra hard, as it directly affected the students and the teaching community. And the reasons are probably multiple, but we also have to remember that we were coming off of a pandemic. So there were many adjustments that had to be made as well. So going forward, I believe the Board of Ed has to proactively plan for these possibilities. As, as you heard, Eric, there are already some plans in place. I am actually very supportive of the proposal that had been made at one of the meetings of using non-relapsing accounts, where unused monies from the budget are, can be saved. Now, I know there are challenges of implementing that, but I'm hoping that we can come up with a solution and, or come up with an innovative or an idea. The school budget constitutes two-thirds of the town's budgets. We have to be responsible.
So wrapping the budget is a delicate balance, because we, obviously, we want to do as much as we can, you know, create new programs, making sure that our educators are fairly paid. There's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes that the public doesn't really get to see. We do a lot of benchmarking to make sure that we are comparable with other school districts. We also encourage our administration to apply for a lot of grants, like the, what we're doing, the Community Health Center, you know, and whatnot. But I would echo what Jamie said, definitely as a community, we need to lobby our legislators in Hartford to make sure that they increase funding for our schools. That's really more of a long-term solution than just keep going through our local taxpayers and asking for more and more and more.
Wonderful. The last position's gonna be really boring, because these are great ideas, and I echo that. The only thing permanent has changed, right? And I think one of the biggest issues are things that have been mentioned here: grants, COVID money. Things aren't dependable necessarily. The way we fund our schools isn't necessarily dependable. So all of these ways, I'm just gonna throw one more word in to accentuate this, is thinking about a budget with a sustainable passion, right? Thinking that far out, I think is really healthy and important, and not assuming that there will be windfalls from various organizations. That would be what I would advocate for, and also looking within the town about how much of a proportion of our budget goes to the schools, which I think is something that could be worked on and collaborated with some of the other boards that we discussed already.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Huber. Victor will be asked.
How do you consider to engage students in the Board of Education as a decision-making process and ensuring that we have the active participation with the students?
Thank you. I think there are many potential programs that could be instituted, and I may not necessarily be familiar with any of these persons here, because all the ones that already exist, so I'm sure my colleagues will correct me if I'm wrong. But I think having students involved, having a student voice involved in the Board of Education, having transparency from the Board of Education to the students is very valuable. So in terms of how a board works, how to build our legends, these are programs that maybe not every student is interested in, but I'm sure many of you might be. And so to bring you into that conversation, to bring you into the advocacy work that we do, would be really valuable, and through liaisons or programs within the school, talks, conversations with students, I think would be valuable to fund. I criticize those, you all have significant buy-in to this, so I think it's vital and important.
So student involvement and participation is something that I, I get to do a lot of in my role, in my professional job at St. Louis University. So I have some ideas on how to get students involved in that shared governance process. One of the things that we do really great here in Eastline, and we hear from our, you know, from our members of the student government, we come to the Board of Ed meetings, but I would like to also, but those are the students that are very exceptional, but I would like to hear from students. You're average student, the student that, you know, adds average academic years probably, but we don't get to hear a lot from them, and, you know, we need to hear their needs and their wants for the school system, especially when it comes to the budget, so we can wrap our budget to see what we need, and definitely community participation is important. So thinking of doing, you know, listening sessions and whatnot, so that you as a student have an opportunity to have your voice heard and also your input taken into the budget process.
I'm a strong advocate of effective and adequate communication between the Board of Ed, students, teachers, and the community. Public and student comments at the Board of Education meeting alone are not enough. The Board can and must do better to reach out to the students and parents occasionally to see feedback. As I've mentioned, if elected, my focus will be on academics, arts, and technical education, following existing protocols, and I know there are protocols. I will strive to reach out and hear directly from the students, teachers, and parents interested in the respective fields about what's working and what can be improved.
I'd like to say ditto to what Esteban said about getting children, children, not children, but getting students involved. Just the first thing, I've come up with a couple of ideas. The first one is maybe to run a focus group. And the focus group just asked me, how can we, as a Board of Ed, get you involved in what we do and hearing what we do? And not just the student, but I want the average students. We don't often hear from the average students, and that's a difficult descriptor. The other, to really define, the other thing is to encourage you, as students, to come to the Board of Ed meeting. We have open comments in the beginning of the meeting. I wish more of the students would come in and say, hey, you did this, so this is how we are affected. I want to hear that. And the other thing is, we also have two students come in every board meeting and give us an idea of what the activities are, what's going on, and what's going to be played. What I'd like to do is see those two students that come in on a weekly basis, rotate through the student senate.
So student involvement's very important, I think collectively, we all are all in agreement with that. We do have two high school students, as Jill said, come in every, every meeting and give us updates. We have middle school students come in on a quarterly basis to give updates on the, on the middle school. We also do involve students in some parts of the process. We had Dominic Stefanski on the interview panel for the athletic director position. We're starting to have students led presentations to the Board of Ed. We had Lincoln recently, a couple weeks ago, give a presentation on all the work that he's done. So we do, but we definitely can do more and want to do more in whatever the best forum is. We'd love, I'm sure I can speak for all the Board of Ed, we'd love to hear from the students of where you could be involved. What would you like to get involved in? Because, I mean, we're definitely open to it. So, thanks so much.
So student involvement with the Board of Education is really important. Everything we do basically impacts students, students and the staff. But we, as everyone has said, we tend to have our highest-achieving students at our meetings. As board members, we need to reach all of our students. When I first became a board member, we used to have all of our meetings in schools. We would rotate on a weekly, monthly basis. It was a chance for our students, parents, and staff to interact with us. One of the best meetings I ever had of her attendance at Flanders. The students on the morning show showed us how all of their equipment works and how their interview process is going together, and they all interviewed the Board of Ed members. It was really exciting and gratifying to see their looks on their faces that we got to interact with them. And being very squeamish, it was nice that they did a fraud by section on the smart screen and not in person, because I don't think I could handle that. But I would love for us to go back to this, the ability to reengage our students, parents, and staff, and...
All right, we're gonna end off here with our closing statements, starting with Ms. Barshelber.
I'm gonna be quick. So it has been a pleasure to serve the town of Eastline for the last 16 years, and I hope that you realize how much I love this town. I love this town, and I'm proud of all the work I've done for it. I do, this service not only for my kids, your kids, but also the future children of Eastline, and I hope that you reelect me to another term on November 7.
So thanks so much for organizing this event. Really appreciate us getting the, the opportunity. For the high school students who are of eligible age, please register, get out and vote. This is a privilege that we have in this country, and your voice can be heard. Love to see a high percentage of high school students out voting. In terms of me, reiterate, with Jamie, I love living in this town. My kids grew up in this town, in this great school district. I think we need to continue this district to grow. It's a great district, we need to continue to grow and advance. And thanks for arranging this, and appreciate it. So, thanks.
Yes, one of my passions has been serving on this Board of Ed, and I've served for 12 years. And it's just something that I see is so important in regards to the success of this community. I think we're one of the most important boards in the town because it drives the quality of our community, community culture and our sense of community. If you travel throughout Connecticut, and as people ask you where you come from or where you live, they always say how lucky I am, which I agree. But the second comment always comes about what a great school system we have in this town, and I want to continue to support it. My daughter went through the school system. She had a great education, great experience for 12 years. So again, I think it's a primary board. It really helps with the success of our community. And I'd also like to say, people that are 18-year-old, or please get out and vote. This will be a critical election for the town, and we need to be sure everyone's there to vote.
As a father of a recent graduate, I have observed and experienced the school system for the last 12 years. We moved to Eastline for the schools, and I'm proud what the school system has done for my son and for every other Eastline student. I hope to bring a fresh perspective for creating growth and development opportunities for our for our students and maintain the high standards that the Eastline schools have set for themselves. I strongly believe we can do more for our students with the current infrastructure at the middle and high schools without increasing the budget. I thank Viking Saga members again for giving us this opportunity, and I hope I can count on the community's support on November 7th. Thank you.
So this morning, prior to coming here, I was at soccer with my daughter, the daughter of Rye Brook. And I was talking to parents, and some of the parents that I was talking to recently new arrived in Eastline. So and I was asking them, so what made you move to this town? And the number one reason overwhelmingly was the quality and reputation of our schools. So I think it's important that we really look into that, because it's also a generator of economic growth and, you know, excellence for, for our town. That's something that really doesn't get talked about that much. Definitely want to make sure that, continue to drive that message through the community. You know, as a parent of two young kids in the school system, I am deeply invested to make sure that we continue to develop, to, to deliver excellent education for them and for generations beyond. And I definitely look forward to all of you seeing you at the fall of November 7th.
Wonderful. You all are students that are really interesting and important at the moment, I think. But I think that schools are under certain pressures that they haven't been for a long time, financially, culturally, educationally. I'm also on the Board of Library here, and we've seen ideas of censorship in education in towns around us, so far not in Eastline, I'm happy to say. But I want to say, as an educator and administrator for the past twenty years, I am a fierce advocate for the academic integrity of the students, the freedom of the students and the faculty and the staff in the schools, and making sure they're provided the resources they need to achieve their goals, in addition to thinking of underrepresented or underserved communities here as well, in order to, again, bring our schools to a higher level for everyone. Thank you.
A round of applause for our Board of Ed candidates. Thank you for making time this morning. We appreciate it. Thank you. We will take a five-minute break, and these days will be hard.